It's the longest minute. We have to start our meeting at 6:30, so that way it's consistent every single time. I don't know if you guys have a time that you start your meetings at? And so sometimes it's the longest minute, but the clock back there says 6:30. So I would like to call this meeting to order. And it is my pleasure to have Plain City Girl Scout troop 5148 to come forward. If you would like to come up here. And then we'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and you guys can start us off. Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you so much for helping us with the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. And we'll have, you can stay for the meeting or you can go on to if you have other things to take care of too.
Is that open to all of us?
Mr. Terry, you have to stay for the rest of the meeting. But thank you so much. We like the quilt that you guys made outside of the council chambers here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, let's give them a round of applause. If there are no further amendment updates or amendments to the council meeting agenda for February 26, 2024, the agenda will stand as provided. Oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Dreyer, would you please call, do real calls? Here.
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 All right, now if there are no further additions or amendments to tonight's meeting agenda, the agenda will stand as provided. Is there a motion to approve the council work session meeting minutes from February 12, 2024? Second.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Dreyer.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Same.
Council minutes were approved with a vote of five to one abstention. And it is my pleasure to recognize at this time our February Youth Spotlight recipient. And if she'd like to come forward. Ms. Lily Schneider. It is my pleasure, Mayor of the Village Plain City, to recognize Lily Schneider. Miss Schneider is sophomore at Jonathan Alder High School and resident of Plain City, has been named the 2024 CDC Summer of the Year. Miss Schneider also achieved high playing skill in several district swimming events, while maintaining a four-point-o rating point average in her academic study. Miss Schneider represents the Jonathan Alder High School swim team at the state championships and greatly serves as a coach for the Plain City Sharks Swim Team. The Village of Plain City is privileged and grateful to have you on board, Lady Schneider. On behalf of the Village of Plain City, thank you. We have a few visitors in the audience this evening. And for our first visitor, if council has any, has no objections, I would motion to waive the three-minute time limit for our first visitor. Okay, Mr. Brendan Shea, if you'd like to come forward.
Thank you very much, Mayor Green, President Terry, members of council. And I wasn't expecting to talk for more than three minutes. Appreciate that, so I'll take it, I'll take it, so that's good. But great to be here this evening, good to see all of you and good to have a chance to meet some of you ahead of time. Thanks for the chance to publicly introduce myself. My name is Brendan Shea and I am a candidate to serve as the next county commissioner here in Madison County. My wife Lisa and I were raising seven children. We live in Jefferson Township on Greg Road, which is about halfway between London and West Jefferson. Professionally, I'm a financial advisor. I have an office, my practice is in London for the last nine years. Prior to that, I was a financial analyst for a number of years. So my professional background is numbers, business, finance, economics. I think that's a great skill set to bring to the Commissioner's office. In 2020, I was elected to serve as a member of the State Board of Education, which I've now done for the last three calendar years. Regardless of what happens with the Commissioner's race, I will be serving out the remainder of my term through the end of the year. Really proud of accomplishments of not just mine, but the boards over the last few years. Some of those touch on issues that can be challenging or at times contentious, but I'm also very proud of the work that we've done across the aisle. I've done a lot of work with some of my colleagues on things like the third grade reading retention and advocating getting rid of it because a lot of the times it doesn't serve the best interest of the student. Maybe the parent, the school system doesn't think it's the best thing for that child. So that's just one example of something that we've done. I've been very proud of that work. My big motivation for running for county commissioner, we love Madison County. We want to continue to preserve what makes it so unique and special. We're in a very unique spot. We're not that far from Columbus and a lot of the really good things that that city does have to offer. But I think most of the people who live here, they live here for a reason. They don't want some of what Columbus also has to offer on their front doorstep or literally in their backyard. And so my motivation is to keep it that way. I've, you know, sitting as a financial advisor with many farmers, small business owners, families, I hear their hopes, their dreams, their aspirations, what they love about our community and the challenges and pain points. And I think it's a unique perspective to bring to the office. And that's where my heart lies in really being a representative of the people. And I want to be a servant of you. I want to be a servant of each of the communities in the township, in the county. My sense is that area perhaps is lacking a little bit in recent years. I was grateful to be able to attend the Darby Township meeting last Thursday. And I commend the trustees for hosting that town hall. It was a great event. There were a lot of questions raised, many of them are the direct purview of the county commissioners. I was a bit surprised that we only had one county commissioner there. I think those are the meetings you got to fight to make it to. Maybe there was a good reason that they couldn't make it, but I know that the local residents really would have loved to have heard from all three of their county commissioners, not just their administrators. As good as administrator's work can do, can be, and I appreciate the good work that they do. Nevertheless, the commissioners are the decision makers. They are the elected representatives, not the administrators. So they need to be there, they need to be able to answer those questions. So that's a big focus, a big priority of mine, increasing transparency. It was said in the meeting the other night, I'm probably going way over three minutes, aren't I? It was, I'm sorry, I'll finish up. It was said in the meeting the other night when someone brought up the issue of the concrete plant, the commissioner present said, you know, if maybe more people had come and expressed their opposition to that, maybe the outcome would have been different. The fact of the matter is that the county commissioners meet at 8:30 on Tuesday morning. Most people are busy raising their family, working, living their lives. They're not able to drop everything and follow point by point what's going on in the commissioners' meeting. I think we need to make it easier for them to follow, things like accessible online meetings. But right now, most people aren't able to do that. So it's incumbent upon the commissioners to have their hand on the pulse of the people of the local communities. And a big part of that comes from the relationships they establish with you all. And so that is why I'm here, that will be my focus. Certainly if I'm successful on March 19th, that will be kicked into overdrive. But certainly if I'm privileged and blessed to become your next county commissioner. So thank you so much for the time. If there's any questions, happy to entertain those.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Our next visitor, I would also motion to waive the three-minute time limit as well, is Mr. Michael Justice and he is running for Union County Sheriff.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember. Hopefully I'll keep it under three so you can get on with your meetings and some hair visiting. I retired last November 30th after 33 and a half years at the sheriff's office. Started in the jail, non-commissioned, worked my way up to third in charge and captain of patrol division. Had the most number of deputies and largest budget within the office during that period of time. And the youngest group for the biggest mistakes as far as teaching and mentoring where we need to be. When I retired, we were down 10 deputies after my actual retirement date. I got calls from two more deputies saying they wanted to go someplace else. And more and more I thought about it, I thought I had to give it a shot to try to stabilize the office. Since I turned in my petitions, the two deputies that were going to leave have withdrew from their processes and staying at the office. It's been a very informative process so far for me, dipping my toes into politics. I can tell you that I do not anticipate any changes with the relationship with the police department unless it's to improve. I've known Chief McKee for several years when I was actually in charge of the task force. That's when I was down here working with him and invited him and his guys along with us in one of the larger drug operations we had during that period of time. So he has been side by side all the way through this and that's the type of relationship I would like to continue with the police department. So if any of you is interested in learning more about me, I have a website, MikeJusticeForSheriff.com. And you can learn weekly updates, endorsements. I am the only candidate for Union County Sheriff that has a local FOP endorsement, which is, I think, very proud of it as well as several officers that have came and gone and have furthered their career in other agencies. So I'll hang around for a little bit if you guys like to have questions. But I wanted to get it back to you guys this meeting. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Thank you. And our final visitor this evening is Mr. Steve Seifert.
So I had an idea in regards to the noise ordinance that I think before you would cast a vote, that it would be beneficial to actually hear with your own ears what the various levels, you know, sound like, all the way from 60 to 70 to 75 to 100. I would be more than willing and would like to help, you know, put on a demonstration, I suppose, was what I'd call it. Could even be right here at the municipal building to make it, you know, convenient for all of you to make it. Not sure exactly when or what time, I'll be here after the meeting if, you know, you wanted to discuss that. But I just, you know, really would like, when you have your discussion period, to think about the idea. I just really think it would help, you know, put to your ear what the various levels sound like. Because we want to get it right, I know you want to get it right. I know we've been working on it and talking about it. And so I just, you know, maybe when I heard that idea, I really liked it and wanted to propose that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seifert. Moving out of business into reports. I attended our village business meeting, I should say, Plain City Business Meeting that was hosted by the village at Durdutman back on February 15th and welcomed the businesses that were in, were able to attend. It was, I talked to one of the business owners that may not be as keyed in all the time to things that are happening and he said it was very nice to hear firsthand what all is happening in the village and the projects that we are working on. So really appreciated staff's efforts of getting that put together and hearing the different departments present. Today, along with Ms. Lepton and Mr. Sanford, we recorded a podcast with the Mary's Village Journal Tribune. Kayleen led the effort along with Mr. Mike Williamson. And we, it should be, I think, on Thursday when it will go live, but it was talking about the DEEPo and just some of the initiatives that we have going on here in Plain City for economic development and how it all ties together with the connectivity. So that has been what I've been working on here lately. And I will turn it over to Ms. Lepton.
Thank you, Mayor. Crews were out prowling and strolling early Saturday morning once again. A little bit more stoned than we expected, but they had a quick response and got up there quickly. Staff participated in a workplace violence training last week. Thanks to the police department for hosting that, it was really vital and all staff participated in it. Jefferson Village had pre-construction meeting last week as well. That's a building just south of this building, so we should see construction beginning out there again in the next month or so.
Thank you, Ms. Lepton. Ms. Sonnet, our finance director. Thank you, Chief McKee.
I guess, Mayor, just have several things. Myself and Lieutenant Jaskewitz, we attended our annual police effective leadership college refresher. And speaking of leadership college, Sergeant Howard actually begins his leadership college training starting. This was, then there are three months to do that, it's pretty intense. And I know I've said this before, but it always surprises me, since 1989, approximately 2,500 people have graduated from POCAP, 850 agencies in Ohio. And six of those now will be from the Plain City Police Department, including myself, Lieutenant Jaskewitz and Sergeant Craig. So I always, I always find that's a proud moment. And then lastly, we have received several applications for police officer positions. Some of them are pretty good. Some, you know, some of them are candidates that don't have the ROPA certificate, but if we pass the thing tonight, we start sending them to the academy to hire one of those. But some, we actually have received some that are from other agencies. That's all I have at this time, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is the cadet program, once it's finally approved, would that be in that job posting? Would those go together or those separate?
Yeah, we haven't been able to post it yet because we haven't passed.
Right.
Once we start, if it does pass, we'll put it with.
It will be in the job.
Yes.
Good question, thank you. Council President, Mr. Terry.
Yeah, so we have our work session next on 3/6, I believe it's the Wednesday, is that right? So session planning Friday, noon, something like that. We could, we'll schedule a time for all council members. We historically done some work session planning and we invite all the council members to it. It's not my meeting, it's just a way to organize our thoughts. It should go along with the work session topics, things that I sent you. You could send Ms. Lepton or I any topics that you guys are interested in having scheduled ahead of time or we try to get together at least like every other month and sit down and kind of talk through items and things like that, so.
The OSU students are planning to attend as well, yeah.
Okay. We'll schedule a time and I'll let you guys all know. Hopefully it's Friday, that's the day I work at home, so Friday is best for me.
They're planning on attending the work session or your meeting on Friday?
The work session.
The OSU students.
They will be attending work session.
Oh, good.
No one wants to attend our.
I wasn't too sure.
I say, I might be around Friday, so. I say, because I won't be at Wednesday's work session, I have to travel, I'll be out of town for work. But, so I can at least see what's going on. Nothing else.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Mr. Lafayette, anything from our law director?
New report.
And I have down Development and Economic, I'm got, uh, let's. We have Development and Economic Development Committee. If I'm going to guess, just Ms. Ferguson, anything along the lines of development?
We have a meeting tomorrow morning at 11:00 a.m.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. BZA?
See, I pulled the calendar for our meeting, I think, Mr. Justice, we have one, I think, assigned coming in for the BZA meeting for next month.
Yes, that's what he, he said, Planning and Zoning, so yes, you're correct. And Planning and Zoning, thank you, Mr. Herriman. Planning and Zoning Commission, we met on February 21st and approved the final plan for Marin Reserve. We're not sure if we are going to be, have anything to approve or review in March. However, Mr. Hutchison is going to be bringing forth sign code legislation to us to review. I may not be able to attend that meeting. I've been asked to be a part of the Jonathan Alder future visioning for the school district. And our first meeting is actually this Wednesday evening. And then the next meeting is March, when we have, March 20th during Planning Commission. But unless we are to vote, I've talked to Planning Commission and they were okay with me attending that meeting for that evening. So that is everything for that update. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Sins.
Thank you, Mayor, so much, like I have a presentation, no. There is actually a presentation tonight, so I will be brief. We spent a little bit of time on council review and council goals. We talked about pool fees probably for most of the meeting, just trying to figure out, looking at memberships even and understanding what the right mix is for membership for non-resident resident and then also the daily fees, how that can be managed. And probably, as we'll hear probably tonight, I don't know, won't be part of the 2024 because there's just a lot to that, to try and figure out the daily fee, daily fees, excuse me. Big event, we'll hear about that tonight is the most, the biggest one coming up is Easter egg hunt on March 23rd. And volunteers are needed on March 19th to pack eggs, correct? And then, though it's not on the list here, I did also attend the Union County Chamber of Commerce meeting. And if you want information about that, I have it.
What's the date on the Easter egg? The packing?
March, March 19th is the packing, the eggs.
Our family did that last year.
Four to, four to seven.
We did that last year, I remember, that was a lot of fun. Where's that at? You fell in. Get to know a lot of people in the community, there were so many different people there that night.
And that's all I have for the, we'll hear a lot more about the Parks and Rec during their presentation tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Sins, Entry Commission.
Next meeting is tomorrow at 6:30 in the conference room, right behind that door.
Thank you very much. Personnel, Finance and CIP, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor, nothing too exciting to report. Our next meeting will be March 6th at 5:00 p.m. So we had to change schedules for March a little bit, so it'll be before the next, that March 6th council meeting, 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. here in the conference room. But just, you know, excited to hear we're getting more applicants for that role and appreciate everybody's support there. It's certainly good news to hear.
I know Personnel and Finance work really hard coming up with a solution with, with staff, so that's exciting. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Fire Board, Mr. Terry.
Our next meeting is March 7th.
Thank you very much. Rules Committee.
Yeah, so the Rules Committee, yes. You guys didn't report justice?
Thank you very much. And Plain City Area Development Corporation.
We had a meeting on the 14th to get all the paperwork set so we could submit. And went smoothly, I thought, we had, we reviewed all the documents. And we set up a schedule, remind, it's the second Wednesday of the month. And we'll do, be doing it at 8:30 in the morning, sort of like the commissioners. So it'll be 8:30 in the morning for us.
Thank you very much, Mr. U.
And we're very excited to get that going. I think it'll be fantastic for our purpose.
That is wonderful, thank you so much. Okay, moving out of reports into our discussion items, we have the 2024 impact fee annual reports.
Thank you, Mayor. This report is required for modified ordinances on a yearly basis. I'm going to sue the council by March 1st, it doesn't need a vote, it's just for the record. There are no amendments to the impact fee processes at this time. We have had some discussions about updating, but nothing formal. There were 185 residential new permits last year, zero commercial new dwellings. That's new buildings only. Fees collected by fund in 2023, public safety was 41,000, roadway was 57,000, sanitary sewer was 208,000. There were no expenditures last year. Last year was the first year that the impact fees really had gone into place for the developments. So the balances aren't much higher than those amounts collected last year. This time next year, we expect to have pretty healthy balances that we can start putting towards projects, including things like sewer line upgrades, we'll still be collecting sanitary sewer impact fees. That's all. Yeah, the district agreed to let us continue. And then when we have a project that we want to put in place because of a new development, we have some money to help incentivize them prioritizing that.
Could you use it for historical areas where like the, the waters were together? Recreation?
I don't believe so, it has to be all as a result of new, a new development. So unless. It's going through that, maybe? Yeah. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, any questions for Ms. Lepton? Okay, Ohio Plan Package Proposal.
And this is another disinformational note to council. The municipal joint services pool, self-insurance pool that we've previously been a part of for liability insurance is dissolving. So we have to sign up for a new plan. The municipal pool has worked together to identify the Ohio Plan as the, a new great option moving forward. So in the package now is just the paperwork for that pool. You can see the great breakdowns of what our liability insurance and everything will be. The premium, because we will no longer have water and sewer buildings, the premium annually will go down as well. We have to make a, not a small payment, but a payment to the pool to cover previous incidences in case anything comes up prior to signing this new plan. But again, just informational, we don't need a vote or anything, but I just wanted to keep everybody informed. We hope to sign, I think, by the end of the week. So if you get a chance to review, let me know if you have any questions or concerns.
Thank you very much. Removal of Chapter 185 income tax of the Confined Ordinances. I'm going to pass this one to Mr. Dreyer.
Absolutely, so as you probably remember, ordinance 2024 was to provide a chapter 170 income tax. A lot of that was required by state law. I was talking to the income tax commissioner, there's going to be three chapters on income tax. And he said chapter 185 has been preceded by chapter 1667. And just as a needed, just to clean up item to keep properties as clean. It doesn't, like, nothing's required, right? It doesn't impact the current and effect ordinances, like, so this is just a clean up item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dreyer. And this brings us to our Parks and Recreation Department Year in Review.
Now the presentation.
All right, well, first of all, we're going to be the Director of Parks and Recreation. We appreciate council letting us get out here tonight and do a Parks and Rec. And we have a little bit of a program here as well. We'd like to get started. Thank you, we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you, my voice is loud, I probably don't need that. We just, I just want to reiterate that a Parks Master Plan was done in 2020 and we really use that as our guiding focus for everything we do in Parks and Recreation. It really took a lot of community input into consideration. And so we use that as the basis for decision-making and thought processes going forward. So some of the basic tenants that we look at are acquiring land and parks to develop trails. We want to provide clean and safe environments and events. We want to grow and maintain all of our recreational facilities as well as our new programs and events. And then lastly, we want to balance all of the needs we have in the community and all the wants. We try and do that in a way that's really practical and, of course, economical.
We're going to be jumping back and forth a little bit. So next slide here, we've got all our communications and marketing. I'm not going to get super deep into the numbers. But we use, we strive to use a different array of media to reach as many people of the community as possible. Some of the big ones, though, if you notice on our Facebook stuff, our.
Some of the big ones, though, if you notice on our Facebook stuff, our reach for our Parks and Rec page, that's how many individual people have seen one of our posts, events, or anything of that sort. So last year, we reached over one hundred and twenty-eight thousand unique visitors. Um, and some of our events have gotten quite crazy because of that.
Um, real quickly, one of the things that we want to highlight, also having to go through all of these that we have developed over certainly the eight years I've been here, and also with Denton and Alas, we have a lot of community partners talking about Easter egg stuffing. But, um, you know, we, we try and do a lot of events and we try and do a lot of outreach and work with different organizations so that they can kind of buoy us up. And that's pretty standard for a lot of Parks and Recreation departments. Um, it's been a slow growth, but we really feel like we're kind of getting to where we need to be in partnering with these folks, whether it's volunteerism or they're actually participating in the events. Another thing we kind of want to talk about is community sponsors. That's another area that, that we've seen a lot of growth in, but we think there's a lot of opportunity for more growth. Um, and that's basically those folks who want to invest in our events, our local events, and have their presence made. So we appreciate everybody, their names are up there, there's probably, could be a couple of people we missed. But these are the folks that day in, day out participate in our sponsorships with our, with our various village events.
Brochure.
Oh, yeah, thank you, man. Um, everybody should have an updated brochure. Um, we're kind of proud of that because we, we, we're jumping into the middle lane. We have a professionally printed brochure. Uh, that's important because we really think that our events are going to have this sort of presence. Um, and it really, it, having that ability to reach out to folks with printed material and also electronic material, so they can kind of see what the events are because we do have new businesses coming in the village. You know, make sure that they understand the core of our, of our events and what we do and how it would make sense for them to invest in that. Alrighty, um, real quickly, I'm going to skim through these pretty quickly. But one of the things we always do, and one of the things the community indicated on the Parks Master Plan, was continual investment in our facilities. Some of the, the, excuse me, some improvements we made, I include Pastime Park, we put a new concrete floor in the cattle barn, which sounds like a minor thing, but it's actually huge. It's a nice, large space and we have a lot of great events there. Um, we had a community businessperson invest and actually donate a new rope onto the Lions Building at no cost to the village. So that was, that was much appreciated. Um, we now have an ADA sidewalk around the youth building and we actually have a gravel parking lot. So we actually now have legitimate parking for the youth building, which we've never had before. So that was a huge improvement. Um, in Madison Meadows, behind this here, we do have a parking lot for that facility. That is going to be, it's a neighborhood park, but it's actually a community park as well. It's always designed to be that way. So that's why we have additional parking there for those folks who are going to be coming in and using the facilities. Um, if you all haven't been back there recently, we're getting really close to the shelter being done. Um, again, the developers are putting in a shelter in the parking lot, and that's a shelter with attached restrooms. So that's a lovely entity to have. Again, that's for the entire community. We do have a playground that we did get O E N R dollar score, grant dollar score. And that's going to be installed here as soon as the weather breaks and we can do the cord rubber footing for that. So we're really excited for that, too. That's going to be a very nice playground. It does have some ADA accessible features for it as well. So we're, that's, that's the first one we've ever had, so we're very excited about that. Um, the Kendrick Park, we did repave the road, so you don't have to worry about your car busting out of tire when you go down the Kendrick Park if you want to put a new tire. Um, we've had quite a few new trees planted there and we have to take out a couple of ash trees that we're kind of lagging on there, but we're getting that done. Um, rental facilities, we'll, real quickly, on Church Street, if you're familiar with it, the Church Street facility just came online this past year. Uh, we did a little bit of renovation to make it friendly for reservation use. And that's been a very popular facility. It's a little, it's upgraded versus the youth building for sure, for sure. So we've got a lot of folks who do baby showers and things like that in there.
Another park area, the McKidrich Meadows Nature Preserve is what we're calling it, formerly the M I Land. Um, that's on the west side of Darby Creek. Um, we've received a thirty-one thousand dollar grant from the E, Ohio EPA, an environmental education grant in partnership with Tolls Outdoor Career Students. Um, they're helping to plan and the park, perform some environmental restoration, and create low-impact recreation activities in the area. Uh, we've got more coming in this next year.
Okay. Um, now we're back to the campground, which is always a hot topic. Um, I actually love talking about the campground because I was in the she shut out of the campground, which is now the shed for Mr. Kids, um, for seven years, six, seven years. Um, so the campground is obviously, we've invested in the campground. The campground revenue has escalated pretty tremendously from when I came on. I think back in two thousand sixteen, I think the revenue was about eighteen thousand dollars. That gives you a little bit of a, a bummer there. But, um, one of the things we did this past year and, and, and didn't have quite a hand in it is we got new camp, camping software, specific to campgrounds. We were sort of using the recreation software and it wasn't great. It's just super friendly, folks can use it on their, on their cell phones. It's, it's just very user-friendly. It's also, you know, backdoor friendly as well. We did update campground rules, which has been really effective. Um, we have rules in place before, these are just a little bit more specific, they give us a little bit more control. If people are causing issues, you're out. I mean, it's kind of that, that, that clear cut. Um, and we do, we did implement a new length of stay limit starting this year. It's six months within a twelve-month period. Um, and we have seen folks understanding that. And we have some people that have decided to find work for residents because of that. And, and so I think it's been very effective, actually. And we appreciate council looking at that and, and, and agreeing with that. Campground rates, we did increase for two thousand twenty-four, did a market analysis, I looked at other campgrounds around. We're a little bit an odd bird as far as a campground, we're not a state park. Um, we're not a destination campground per se, but what we are is we're uniquely situated so close to Columbus and Dublin and Hilliard. So we get a lot of folks coming in to do events and, and stay with us for that sort of thing. So we kind of looked at the market and we were a little bit under the market. Um, so we raised campground rates and so far it has really been an on-issue, to be perfectly frank. Haven't had too many people complain. Um, so by the numbers, total number of reservations, almost two thousand reservations last year. Uh, revenue is three hundred and twenty-two thousand. Our average length of stay at the campground is five days. Um, this gives you a visual of what we're looking at from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-three. And you can see that the campground revenue has escalated. Twenty twenty-one was, I wouldn't say it's an anomaly because two thousand twenty-three was quite strong, but that's when COVID was really in full swing and you just saw everybody going out buying campers and camping. So you can see that two thousand twenty-two softened a little bit in revenue, but still compared to two thousand twenty, we're well above. So we were about one hundred and fifty thousand, again, we're about three hundred and twenty-two thousand. Um, just want to emphasize that campground revenue actually covers park expenditures as a whole. So it's not just campground expenditures, it's, it's park maintenance expenditures and so forth. So it really alleviates the general fund having to, 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 you know, basically subsidize the park budget. Um, real quickly, this is just some quick stats. The cattle barn housing is rented thirty a year, forty-seven for the north shelter. The south shelter, fifty-five rentals, the loft, thirty-nine rentals. And then Pastime Park is our big winner, one hundred and fifty-five rentals. So it's very popular. Um, this is not an exciting slide, but this just gives you an idea of, of youth building, the escalation and the, basically the rental rates and revenue. And then, of course, the loft at Church Street just came on this past year, so. Um, one thing I did want to mention is, you know, speaking of community partners and so forth, Plain City Area Ball Association. Um, we do have a partnership with them, they use the fields. We lease the fields to them for just an nominal amount. Um, but they do all the maintenance, the mowing, the dressing of the fields. Um, and they have put, I think it's approaching forty thousand dollars into the facilities this past year. Uh, they've done updates to several facilities over the last few years. So it's a really beneficial partnership because those are things, those are recreational programs that we don't have to buy. So they do a fantastic job, um, and that's a great community partner to have. Um, lastly, I'll go over these kind of quickly, a few things we have planned. This isn't the complete list, but these are just a few highlights. Um, new picnic tables at Pastime Park, those are actually our inn. Um, we want to run electricity to the north shelter. Um, several roofs, I guess we left out with the hail damage because through an insurance claim, several of the buildings are getting new roofs. Um, so we're really, it sounds very excited about that because, um, they're, they're, they're long needed. Um, Heritage Trailhead, we're working on engineering design. Um, that is the area that's just east of the Darby, the, the M I Land, sometimes folks call it. Um, so we're working on that. The first phase is going to be a shelter with a parking lot and then probably a paved gravel path. And again, that was state capital dollars, we received a grant, four hundred thousand dollars. It will be more than that, of course, but, um, we are working through that as far as the cost. And then that's sort of like the, that is the trailhead. And then there are several, um, uh, several ways that the trail will come into that trailhead. We're just, a couple of dominoes need to fall, and we'll talk about that probably at work session. Um, the dog park on Jackson Street, we're working on engineering design for that. Yes, it's going to keep back very high, so we're working on sort of paring that down a little bit. But we hope to certainly get that going this year. Um, the nature preserve, um, basically we're just going to, again, if you can imagine the nature preserve park in Kendrick Meadows is going to be very natural. Not going to have a playground, there might be fishing in the pond, there has a lovely pond. Um, we might do some programming, some kayak programming, but we want to be very natural area, which is moated paths. Um, so we're going to install a gravel, a very simple gravel parking lot. And we're going to continue to remove invasives, plant trees, and then we're going to have some educational signage as well. Um, one of the things that we talked about and, and, and the village minister and I talked about is one of the things that, that we're going to be doing this year is we're creating a roadmap for Parks and Recreation. Um, it was Department of One, we, we lost somebody to do a large Department of Two. But, um, we really need to start, we see all the parks that are coming online, we see our needs, we see maintenance needs. And we really need to start mapping that, what does that look like? What does that look like in the next two years, the next five years, the next ten years? Um, so we're really starting to work on that and flesh out as, whether it's maintenance department, hire additional people. Um, we're going to be working on all of that this year. And hopefully, you know, as you see the road coming on, that will also help to develop organically as well. Um, Madison Meadows, we're excited about that. There's a lot going on there. You know, the first phase is basically, we've got a parking lot in there, the shelter in there, and the playground in there. And then we actually have it designed out for a walking path and some athletic fields. So we'll be looking at that as far as costs moving forward. Again, uh, right now, we have to do things in phases whenever we can. Um, Pastime Park, we're going to continue to improve the facilities. I think next, coming up, uh, is going to be working on the south shelter. Again, our goal is not to tear down existing buildings. If it's a historical building and it has some air to stay up, we're going to keep it up and we're going to invest in it. We've done that in a lot of areas. It makes sense. Um, we like that park to be historical, so I'm a little sick of it. Um, Heritage Trail and Tribe, we talked about that a little bit. Congress Road Parkland, that's known as a vacant property. We have purchased the homestead area. And we have another forty-two acres that we're looking at grant funding for. We're really excited about that. I think when we first looked at that, everybody thought, oh, it has to be far away. Yeah, it's, it's, it's not. Um, it's in a really great location for us and the initial talk has been some sort of an agricultural heritage park. Um, we're not sure how that looks quite yet, but, um, one of the things we met with other municipalities and one of the things they said is the one thing they regret is not just acquiring land. So, um, and we know that that's an expensive thought process to have, but we all know that it's not getting any cheaper and it's certainly not going to be there in twenty years. So this was a great, this was a fantastic opportunity. We're in a vigil, vigil came to us and said he didn't want development and he would want to give something back to the community. So it was a, just a fantastic opportunity to get that land. And then we want to continue to be involved in development planning. And if, if, uh, Mr. Sanford and Mr. Hutchinson were here, I would thank them because they have, they have pool assistance meetings and have been able to give input and garner input and make sure that the multi-paths that we need, the one connectivity between every subdivision between basically every village in Plain City and the, as council's role as well. It's definitely our goal. Aquatics, that's me again. Real quickly, aquatics, um, our pool is well-loved. We know the history of the pool, it was going to be shuttered, the community came together, passed a levy. And so the community currently funds, um, basically the cost of building that new aquatic center. I believe twenty-three thousand is from that bond is, is going to be filled, done. Um, so, but we have to keep in mind, and I think this is kind of surprising to people, you know, the pool's thirteen years old this year, it'll be its thirteenth year of operation. And you think, well, that's not that old. It's, it's actually getting old, older because now you start to look at the life of pumps and you start to look at the infrastructure of the pool and all these things. It's amazing how much things age. Just in that three months it's open, it gets a lot of wear and tear. Um, real quick, some quick stats. Uh, pool memberships are about four hundred and twenty-four for last year. That equates to about fifteen hundred people within, contained within those memberships. Daily passes, about ten thousand five hundred, that equates to about one hundred and nineteen people a day on average from the pool. We hire about forty pool employees. We had one of our pool employees here earlier getting honored, which is awesome. I was excited about that. Uh, Pooch Pouty at the end of the year, that's a big event. We get fifty dogs and about seventy-five humans and it's crazy, but it's a lot of fun. We, we love that. Um, swim lessons continue to be super popular, um, and pool parties as well. And we have started an approach where village residents get first dibs or first out of registration or what have you. So we're always a hundred percent booked on swim lessons and swim parties. And we've made village residency a priority. So March first, it will open up for, um, private pool parties and we, we expect that probably residents will, will take most of those. So we've got that set up for this year. Now, this is a different picture than, than the park. And I will say, having looked at other municipalities, this actually, it, it doesn't look like a great picture, but it's kind of standard. We're actually in better shape than a lot of other swimming centers, to be perfectly honest. Um, you know, our pool revenue does not cover our, our pool expenditures. It's not going to. You can't price it out, you can't raise membership enough, you can't raise the daily pass cost enough to really ever bridge that gap. It's just kind of a, 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 a fact about operating a pool. It's, it is what it is. It's something that you give back to the community from your government and, um, is they're just not moneymakers. At least they don't cover the, the expenditures. So that just kind of gives you an idea, we're not actually horrible, we're not too bad compared to other municipalities. But I think what you're going to see as the pool ages, that, that, that expenditure line is going to continue to increase because we're going to have to invest in a new, you know, fifteen thousand dollar pump. It's fifteen thousand dollars a day, four years from now, who knows what it will be. So those are the things we have to start planning for and, and definitely make sure that we have that in the works. Um, real quickly, we, we put new sand in the filter media, this is exciting stuff, you guys are waiting here, I'm sure. Um, we packed lots of pool slime, we repaired controllers. Again, everything's getting a little bit aged, uh, with pump maintenance. And every year we buy twenty to forty chairs, and I know people don't think we do, but I promise you we do. Um, we always are buying new chairs for those. And then this doesn't really fall in our aquatics, but this is actually recreational programming. And we started this, uh, the, the first year after I was here, I think in two thousand sixteen, we started this two thousand seventeen. And, um, we're really excited. If we had more pool space, more pool time, we'd have a larger swim team. That's, that's all I'm sure of, but we just don't have the time and pool space for it. But last year, we had a hundred and twelve swim, swim team members. We did six swimsuits, we did three home meets. Again, we give party registration to residents versus non-residents. Um, right now, for two thousand twenty-four, we're in the, we're doing an aquatics feasibility study. And that's a really important thing for a couple of reasons. With the aquatics feasibility study, it's not just about, uh, expanding and increasing the pool space, excuse me. It's also looking at the infrastructure, what we need to replace, they look at all of that. So it's a really important thing that we're doing. Again, planning, 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 because what we don't want to do is just sit around and wait and then something catastrophic happens with the pool. And they're like, well, I should have planned for that. So that's what we're in the process of doing. We are, of course, we're working on improving a maintenance schedule and CIP planning for that in conjunction with the aquatics feasibility study. And we are, we're painting the pool interior and adding additional shade for folks. And we're getting new pool chairs.
All right, we're going to jump back over to be here. Um, so a couple of things that you guys have in front of you. Um, one that I'm going to highlight is you have our two thousand twenty-four calendar events. This is looking forward for next year. There's quite a bit on there, um, but we're going to take a look back at all of two thousand twenty-three, um, these next coming up slides. And one of the things I did want to mention is the village got a program called Placer AI. Uh, it gives us the ability to go on and geofence an area and get an estimate, uh, estimate of attendance for different events. Um, so it's been really helpful. Um, it's great for future planning, gives us, and for sponsorships and stuff, it's, you know, gives us some good numbers to be able to give them. So we're going to run through these pretty quick because it's a lot. But these are kind of our big, big events throughout the year. Um, we started out in June with Bluegrass and Barbecue. Last year, about a thousand two hundred people at that. This was a great event that popped up, Mother's Cookies, um, kind of came together, a private company wanted to put on a, uh, event in Uptown Plain City. It cost the village no money to put on. Um, it was free for the residents to go and attend. I had over two hundred, two thousand three hundred people show up for that. Fourth of July, this number surprises me and it doesn't at the same time. According to the Placer AI data, we had throughout the whole day, seven thousand one hundred people in that park. It's, we made some changes this past year with, uh, for safety, um, where we don't allow cars into the park. And I think that, um, they actually went really smoothly. A lot of the community members really appreciated that because they felt a lot safer with their kids running around and everything like that there. Farmer's Market, this is one of the events that we have, are inherited from Upco after they just invaded. Um, runs from, uh, beginning of July all the way through the beginning of October. Uh, we had fourteen, or fifteen market dates last year. Um, we received a four thousand dollar grant from the Union County Health Department that allowed us to, um, implement a variety of, um, activities. And then the nutrition assistance programs, such as Snap and Wick. Everybody's favorite, Music in the Park, I'm sure you hear a lot of that. Um, we, we had a total of fourteen Sundays throughout the summer. Um, we had fifteen different groups perform at. Um, it's free, it's a pastime park, it's always a great time. Fall Fests, this is, uh, one that's quickly become one of our more popular Keystone events. Um, this is the third year that we've had it. Uh, we were, we had three thousand one hundred people show up. Uh, we had to kind of do the same parking we did for Fourth of, Fourth, Fourth of July because of the attendance. But, uh, tons of friendly, family-friendly activities, vendors. We had really good support from the businesses and the local organizations helping out Trick or Treat Alley. So we always like to involve them. Christmas Under the Clock. This is another Upco event that we inherited a while back. For this one, we had about 3,500 people. A lot of the Uptown businesses and the Route 42 holiday hop businesses really pitched in and made it a great event. The tree lighting ceremony is always awesome. And then we've got kind of a few of our other big ones here, just highlighting how many people we had. The Easter account, we get every year from the, or we inherited from the BFW Auxiliary. It's pretty well-attended, even though the weather was not so great last year. We had a lot of people. Touch a Truck, that was the first year that we've run it. We had a thousand people. This year, we're kind of adjusting it based on some feedback that people wanted it in the early evening so they could get there after work and attend. So it might be even bigger this year. We have some nature programming, different events. They're smaller groups, but they're really well-attended, cooking programs and some other things. And then our Holiday Lights at Pastime Park, this is the first year that we sync it to music on the radio. And we hope to keep continuing to add to that every year as we go along. Here for next year, kind of some things that we're focusing on. We have a few different events coming up in addition to things that we already do. We want to kind of increase efficiency and the quality of the events that we already have and partner with those agencies that we have been and new ones in the future to make those events even better. And then one big thing at the end, it's kind of heard us say several times, is to get some more sponsorships for those events. Got one last section here for you.
Okay, before, before Denny starts, I want to say one thing. Because I like to give credit where credit is due. And Denny really took this and really, I don't know, Mary, if it was your idea initially to be a Tree City USA. I always had a vision of Pastime Park being our arborum. It was just, you know, on the list of priorities, kind of never got there. And then Denny kind of took this on and we thought it'd be a simple thing to just be, hey, let's be a Tree City USA, that can't be that hard. So he's really just put in a lot of hours on this. I'll let him go ahead and explain a little bit about it, but he had to go through multiple steps to just get to where we are now with it.
Yeah, so apparently Plain City did have a, an ordinance, a tree commission, but it was defunct. It didn't really exist. So we revitalized that in partnership with ODNR. And their goal is basically to provide guidance and expertise to village administration, residents, and the developers coming in. We've accomplished quite a bit, even though we just started in May last year. Some highlights, one of the big things that we had to do was update the village tree ordinance, which was extremely out of date and got that all done. And that was part of the Tree City USA requirements. We have a webpage now on the website with all kinds of information about planting trees and anything you could want to know about that. And then several events like Earth Day and Arbor Day and helping out with those. Here goes some quick numbers for you. And this was, might be slightly different now, but this is what we submitted when we did Tree City USA in early, early October. This doesn't, the new developments, so there was 241 trees planted in 2023. 40 trees pruned, four trees removed. We looked over development landscape plans and made some comments and feedback on three of those. And then we had our Memorial Tree brochure, which you'll find that you guys have as well that we updated. We did 10 memorial trees last year.
Just one of you.
Yeah. Tree City USA, I'm not going to dive into all the things that you need to do it, but we did submit our application. It's gone through both the local and state level. The final thing is the Arbor Day Foundation has to approve it. But we've been told that if the state person approves it, you're going to get it. So in May this year, we are planning to get our first Tree City USA award. So that's exciting. And then just a few things we're looking at for next year. So some more tree events, Earth Day, we secured 2,000 trees that we're going to be giving away for free that we did not, came at no cost to the village. Our Arbor Day celebration, some tree planting workshops. Revamping the Memorial Tree brochure already happened. We've got that done recently. Want to also, as Linda mentioned earlier, get Pastime Park certified as an arborum. So really excited.
Well, that kind of wraps it up, but I just do want to reiterate this, pretty much the same as I've already had it. You know, we are following the Parks and Rec master plan. It really is our guiding guideline and it's sort of like the book that we live by. Always keep in mind that we do listen to residents and keeping in mind that we are always open to either partnering with folks on events. Sometimes we get events sort of like on our lap and that's okay. We run with it. But we are really excited to be able to get the things done with the two-person apartment that we get done. So hopefully this explains a little bit. I know we're going to have work sessions coming up. We're going to delve a little bit deeper into Parks and Rec and then we look forward to that. But I just want to open up if you guys have any questions at this time.
I have one. Maybe everybody else knows the answer to this, but what is an arborum?
An arborum is a place that has a, there's certain levels of standards you have to have. Basically, it's a place with a lot of beautiful trees. Yeah. And Level 1, there's different levels, but Level 1, you don't have to do like, you don't have to have a staff member on site to get people tours. So there's different levels that you can attain. But ours would be the first level, which is basically like you have to have, I think, 22 different species of trees.
25, yeah.
Is 25. Yeah, so you have to meet different criteria in order to have that. So I'm really excited. One of the things that we're really pushing with the Memorial Tree Program is we're trying to push people to expand what tree they might want to plant, particularly at Pastime because what we don't want to have is, which we saw with Emerald Ashport. You have ash trees and then boom, you're wiped out. We have a lot of oak, we have a lot of maple. So we're trying to expand the offering of trees that we have in the parks. We don't have monoculture. We don't want that. There's always some figure that's going to come and take down the trees. So we want to make sure we have a variety of trees.
Couple, one comment, just really great work. I think so many programs that we see, you have the foundation of what we consider our community here. And that's the work and the training and stuff there. Not a sponsorship thing, I wonder if you're going to get more sponsors. I mean, that's something that we can help, you know, with our relationship with the community. So my question there is how do we recognize those sponsors? Is there like a sticker program we can do for their business window or something or?
You can obviously, that's sure. I mean, we're open to anything like that because each, each business has sort of like a hot button of what they want to see. I know folks that sponsored the swim team in the past, we either put their name on a t-shirt or we gave them a little framed, you know, certificate. And I know some businesses would like to have those on the wall. So we'll look at doing the right things. But typically, what we look to do during the actual event is we have banners, yard signs that can level sponsorships, you know, but make sure they're on our Facebook page, social media, that sort of thing.
Yeah, and a lot of it's outlined in that sponsorship brochure, but if you have other ideas of things we can do.
Yeah, I just like, like creating that kind of spirit, right? If I walk in this building, you have a sticker, you have 10, I'm like, hey, nice job, you know? Like it makes it competitive between people, something that's a little more visual. I know that the events is certainly important, but if I walk into the baseball card shop and I see, you know, 15 stickers on there, I may get, I may, hey, Bankersport, all this stuff. This is what creates, we need a little lot of stuff.
Absolutely.
Just one idea there. And then the playground install, is that, have that been paid for? Do you need help with that? We're good, okay.
Yeah, there.
Yeah, $20, I'll take it. No, no, yeah, it's, it's been paid for. So that was partially ODNR, I think we had $83,000. Let me tell you, $83,000, they're massive. But yeah, so no, we paid for that, it's ready for, and that includes installation. We just had to, we actually got it in last year, but we had to wait for the weather because it's going to, it's going to be a nice, it's going to have cord rubber footing, safety footing. So we had to wait for certain temperature. So we're anxiously waiting for that. We got it ready to go.
Yeah, we're walking through it.
Yeah, it's all over there by the, in the market for it.
Yeah, yeah, it's exciting.
I do have one more question. On the revenue versus expenditures for the, for the Aquatics Center, you said you compared it to different municipalities. Would it be possible to see that chart? It'd be nice to see how we compare to others.
If I didn't take their information, put it in your sort of chart, we could probably do some more research and we could probably provide that. Yeah, I mean, it's just, not to be flippant at all, it's just kind of well-known that pools lose money.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Especially look at the proportion.
Curious what it looks like compared to other.
We could look at the proportion for sure, yeah.
Did that, did that number include like the actual payment towards the principal? Or is that what is in here on operating house? So that graphic looks a lot, yeah.
And I will say, I sat down with Renee Masanet and I didn't really, I can have to, have to say honestly, I didn't understand that, so I know the village worked. So the one thing that was really liking to me is that the way that the village works for the, for the pool debt is that the more development we have, that debt is spread amongst people. I did not realize that. So everybody pays a little bit less. So that's actually a good, a good thing to think about as we have more development that is spread out.
You could tell the Facebook forum, that's how property taxes work as well. And education is.
I'm trying to say off of the forum if I can, but yes, I think that's, it's a good point. I honestly, I didn't know that.
I will say, these communications, these year interviews, you know, this is what we'd ask for. With more communication, more transparency, more updates on what the staff's working on so that we can continue to guide the more big picture. One thing we all talked about, I know at our council retreat work session, was we'd like to be as involved as possible on like the design of like a future usage. So when we get to the work session conversation, I think about, you know, what do we all want to see? What River Park, Congress Drive part looks like? Madison Meadows is already kind of a little farther along. I think that was one thing that, you know, we all kind of said, oh, it would be nice to like, I've seen the design, have input on the design. And we certainly want you guys and the Parks and Rec Committee to do the first review. But we want to, you know, where we see park use in the future and things like that. But I think that was one big thing that came out of that retreat. But these, these reviews have all been great, all of them have been awesome, so.
Super. And I appreciate that because, you know, a master plan like any other plan is, is extremely valid at that exact point.
Yeah, we didn't have, we didn't have Congress Drive Park, right? So I would have liked.
So it's just, you know, you use it as a guide, but then you have to be able to morph and flow. And then you have to look at, you know, when is it time to do another, you know, update to it? That's something to think about because our demographic changes, our needs change.
Yeah, and I will, but I will say like, as we went through all of these things, like the amount of like parks, nature reserves, like untouched land, like that's what everyone wants, right? Non-developed stuff, like just parks and everything. So the fact that we can show the cases, like we're not, this is what we're striving for. And I think it's all great. Public space used like as much as we can get, it's great, it's awesome.
Have we started developing standards over these parks? So like what our path would be? We want a 10-foot path, 12-foot path? What the typical section is, like what are we building it out of? Do we have, you know, like you've talked about some gravel paths versus asphalt paths. There's standards we could maybe put out, instead of you guys relying on ODNR, we can have our own. And so when a contractor comes in or developer, we'd say, this is what we'd like to see.
Are you talking just for new developments?
Yeah, both new developments and our new parks, because as you said, we're trying to acquire different lands. We could try and make them at least look somewhat uniform, that we have a certain look to them, you know, a black fence or a white fence or are we looking for, you know, that's what I'm just looking for. Because right now, we're small enough that we can maybe develop that, that as we get bigger, that becomes more uniform throughout the.
No, I agree. I think now is the time, you know, I always like to say where the critical point is. But I mean, really, now is the time to start developing standards, what developers know, this is what we expect.
That's why I get that.
It's not so good in a, you know, a six-foot, you know, gravel path. Now, we don't accept that. I mean, that's the one thing about working with development that we've been really, you know, fortunate about is we are brought in that conversation now. I don't know necessarily that that was the case previously.
That's why I get that. I don't want to get stuck with something that we, yeah, we're telling we need a park there and these developers, we don't get, but we think we were going to get there, you know?
Right.
One thing I will mention, I know you mentioned the gravel path. The one spot that we're particularly talking about that at, at the Heritage Trailhead, it is in a flood plain, so there are certain restrictions on it.
Right, oh yeah.
So, yeah, sometimes our hands are tied.
Yeah, like in Pittsburgh Park, like obviously, like that area, you don't expect that's mowed. You know, that's really more nature, yeah.
Exactly. So it is a little bit of a case by case, but that's a good point, is to just have those standards and say, this is what we expect. And I agree, and that's, the tree commissions uphold that. It's all starting to come together where we are sort of giving them the outline, we're not just accepting. We're actually.
Yeah, that could be the next step for you. I mean, I love what we, I love what this has happened so far. Our Parks and Rec was not like this when I first moved out here. And, and when, before you came out.
It wasn't Parks and Rec.
And it's developed. I mean, it's not just the parks. The swim, the swim group that you developed, our swim, if you look at our school swim team now, it's, I think it's, it's success because of that program. I mean, you look at any of our sports programs at schools too, it's because of the PCABA program and you, and how you guys work with that in partnership, it builds the whole community up. It's just not for us, it's for the schools as well that we're building this up.
That's Peter's programs.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Kind of what the, the sports stuff is, you know, just working with partners like the PCABA. And, you know, I even think about to, you know, talk with one of, one of the folks about it's like, oh, it'd be great to have, we need more baseball fields. It's like, okay, you get this development, get some ball field, your ball field there. And they're like, well, that's good, but now I have an umpire who's working here. How does he get from this field to go to, to that field? So it's like working with the, you know, obviously we'll have our input, but, you know, working with the partners who utilize the parks, the parks more of saying, hey, you know, it's great to have like five ball fields, but if they're in like 10 miles apart, that really doesn't do the organization good where it's like, okay, maybe condense it into one spot. And that may just as we get those lands kind of developed saying, hey, this would be a focus of, of helping those organizations out.
And to your point, I think that, you know, Plain City really is in an interesting phase because, you know, we've gone from just burgeoning, I mean, not having a department, right? And now we're actually taking control, we're starting to have plans and develop things. But that's a good point with PCABA because that comment has been made from PCBA. It's really hard for us logistically to mow and take care of and we're trying to use the school and use this. So that's one of the top requests from actually the master plan, the community input is they'd love to have a rec center, they'd love to have a sports complex, which is great, we do too, it's just a lot of money.
And when you think about our strong zoning code and, you know, the fact that we put on all these community events that support the surrounding areas, it's one of the main drivers and main reasons why people should want to join Plain City and not develop outside of the village, separate from us. Because the village residents that are paying those bills and paying an income tax to put on these community events that we don't even have 7,000 residents that are coming to our block and we've been a really good partner to our surrounding areas. And we would really help that all those individuals would want to join and be a part of that. And we have, like you pointed out, the sharp zoning code, and as you daily pointed out, the sharp zoning code that we can actually implement and put in place. So when I hear about all these developments that are going in and people are maybe saying, oh, you don't want to go to Plain City or something, it really drives me crazy because of all the work and all the support we give to the PCABA using our Pastime Park. Trust me, I, my children play on those basketball teams and those baseball teams. Not everyone's a Plain City resident and taxpayer. Every, but we're all supportive of everyone around. So I really hope that all of our partners around also, you know, hear that and think about that when we talk about why you would annex it as opposed to maybe not doing that.
And to go along with the, like, planning and zoning, and Mr. Herron may recall, we have talked about design and construction standards because we were like, how can we put that into the zoning code? And you can't put it into the zoning code. We have to basically have it listed so that when staff goes into the meetings that you say, this is what are, that, the standards that we have adopted. So that is, that's maybe a priority we talk about at a future because it's really out of planning commission and it's, it needs to come probably from council to give to staff. So that, because I, I go back to looking at Darby Fields, love the path. I like that there's benches. Why is there gravel under the benches that kicks onto the path? And it goes back to those, the standards. And it goes back to those, the, the standards.
And we have the tools, we have resources and professionalism to do those types of things. And that's really where we really strive to be, where really we excel is development and city planning and parks and recreation and things like that. I think that, we should make that very clear.
I think so, and, and the outreach that you guys have done for the community, and I think the Fall Fest was shocking. Especially the amount of people who were interested on the Facebook site, I think.
We're putting it online later this year.
What was the, I think we pointed out the one, I know it was over nine thousand at one point.
We had more interested in ours than Dublin and Hilliard's combines.
I did notice that about a two to one for Brew at the Bridge Park. We, we were trumping that one by quite a bit, so.
And we can, and we can give Mayor Carney, I remember she came to me, I don't know if it was the second or third year I was a great young member, so let's still follow this in about a month.
By nineteen.
So, but it just runs, it's a fantastic, and that's exactly what, when you speak about a community, that's, that's what you feel right there. So I appreciate you guys recognizing that.
I also liked, just when I've been out Saturday morning, walking through the park, just loving to see people play pickleball, you know?
Play the most part, yeah.
It's just, there were just people, you know, taking advantage of.
Yeah, using our facilities from what they're used, supposed to be used for.
Right, yeah.
When you said it works out for me.
Thanks, thank you, and thank you so much on all your work, like for, for those events that get like harebrained ideas, like, hey, this sounds like a great one. I know you probably like, why is this? And, and the tree commission is Tree City status, it's like, it's really exciting to see these things come to fruition.
And I'll, I didn't realize we were front and back on this, like, next year we're going to be like a three or four pager?
We have to go.
Okay, our next discussion topic is the noise ordinance proposal.
We made the changes from, this is a new ordinance from the last time. The sound levels were changed from being measured at the receiving land use to the, the source from the property line or fifty feet, fifty feet from the property line? I think we said, so you don't have to go onto anybody's private property, but you, officers will be able to measure from fifty feet for the property line. The districts are, or the land use categories remain the same. And the decibel levels are probably what needs to be discussed most tonight. This, the main thing we hear feedback from, if they're a little high or if they're appropriate. We did include, just at your seat, the readings that were taken last summer, just for some frame of reference.
These are my readings, by the way, and this is our research readings, so we have walked around and heard the different levels, but that's the point.
So your, your highest reading that you had, had taken was in the ninety.
This was at the receiving location.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Basically, like where we were standing was that was the reading, so it's a little backwards in that discussion. So basically, if I was standing at back of Lovejoy's parking lot, you know, all right, it was fifty decibels at that location, you could hear the band at that location. But that, but if you, if you kind of base this all off of, we started at the source, right? And you say, okay, those decibel radius, and they vary, you know, the guys are playing the drums or whatever. And I wouldn't, this wasn't professional, this was me and Ms. Ferguson walking around, so we shouldn't be, you know, only utilizing this, we should be utilizing other things. But that's what I would say the source was at that time, because basically, when we were walking, the, the source of the noise didn't change, right? So it's just really about where we were and what it was, where we were at that.
So we have like the granary stage left, like is that like literally like stage left or property, at the property line stage left?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's literally what we, we went and stood there with, well, you have a couple, or we had a couple, I don't know if we still, that's what it is.
And this was just one evening?
One evening, two people.
Yep. I know, the three of us went around another night, but we just actually.
That night, there wasn't a.
There wasn't a band.
It would have been, everyone would have been there reasonable that evening. So ever attention to look at this, there tends to be a lot of discussions tonight. What I think would be, we're not going to vote on this tonight, we're not voting on it at the work session. Maybe we just go ahead and put it as a quick discussion item to see if anyone has anything between now and the work session. So we give her another chance, sometime to digest this, digest comments, do their own readings if they'd like to, as I think one of the speakers suggested, if they want to go listen. And if we have another opportunity, and if there's not a lot of discussion, we'll hear a first read now on Saturday, and so we have to belabor the point tonight.
So I, I guess the only question, how was it at eleven PM, set for basically all the time? I know previously, correct me if I'm wrong, things like nine PM for Sunday through Thursday, and then Friday, Saturday was eleven PM. Is that, does that circle through our current ordinance is for the times for the noise? I think it's on the first page, right?
Whatever, it was before crossed out.
Yeah, crossed out, nine PM, Sunday through Thursday, and eleven is a good question.
Is that potentially a typo? Did we just miss that? Because I don't remember us bumping to eleven for every night.
Yeah, that might just be the chart missed that, if we, if council agrees, we can add that back in there.
Because I know the mixed use you have Friday, Saturday, that's the only one that's there, all the other ones are.
I, I think, I think your point is well-taken, that the intention was always to have separate on the weekends versus the weekdays. I think this is what you're getting, and I think that was the intention.
For just business or for multiple land use categories?
I think it should. I really want a blessing in my house, is that we're going to say, you know, residential to residential? No, no, I think, I think everything, this general assumption was that a Sunday night or a Monday night is different than a Friday, Saturday, would be general.
And then the, the one hundred for, for the business district and everything, why was that selected versus around at like a ninety, ninety-five? Just curiously.
Yeah, I think this is just based on research from other municipalities, but again, we're, we're totally open to that being reduced.
I do believe we, there was, there was a chart when we first had this discussion of what the police did with the, with a meter that you got from Hilliard. And I think you went and took some readings, and I believe we looked at that one as well and looked at readings on that, so, that chart.
And I would just, when I was trying to research decibels, like one of the things, just kind of a rule of thumb is like, I think, like ten decibel, the, like quote, exactly. But I think it's like, they say ten decibels is like the sound doubling. So if something is, you know, you hear seventy, then something's at eighty, it's going to sound like it's twice as loud. And, and it like keeps compounding, so like, you know, seventy to ninety sounds like it's going to be four times louder than what it is. So just as you look at the, the difference, kind of where your sound would be, just kind of perspective, I guess.
So we are going to make the change that we're going to have Monday or Sunday night to Thursday would be a certain time.
I don't think anyone's disagreeing with that, right? I think everyone.
No, I just.
I agree, I agree, I agree, yeah, yeah.
We sort of left there and I was.
I know, I know, no, I was actually looking around when you said that, I was making sure, and I was like, I don't think anyone disagrees, so.
I think some of the others want to make sure that we're all in agreement, that we were, that we're going to add that back in.
Yeah, I think, I think.
Or at least in the chart, we can do in this table form, but we could have that.
Yeah, in my opinion, this is, this is my personal, you can, this is why I said, we, we all take a moment. And we don't have to base the merits of a decibel right this second, and we, because I think we're close, and if we want to tweak at five or whatever, up or down, we can do that at the work session, so then we can. I think, would you consider that a scripter change if we did a five decibel change?
We're not voting on this tonight anyway.
It's only first reading, so you're allowed to make those sort of changes between the first and second read is what I'm asking.
Yeah, I think if, again, there's a point where it becomes substantive and it's a gray area.
Yeah, I think, I think we're only talking really about changes. If, if there was a substantial change, we could address it once we get, once we actually see what the change is.
Yeah.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the noise ordinance?
Making good progress.
Yeah.
Three years.
Chipping away at it slowly.
Tipper away.
Okay. Unfinished business, second reading ordinance six dash twenty twenty-four, establishing a moratorium on the cultivation, processing, and retail sale of adult-use cannabis within the village of Plain City.
Motion to approve ordinance zero six dash twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Udale?
Yes.
Mr. Sence?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Ordinance passes, six dash twenty twenty-four passes six to zero. Moving into new business, first reading ordinance four dash twenty twenty-four, amending the codified ordinances, chapter five oh nine dot one, excessive noise of part five of the general offenses code. First reading, ordinance seven dash twenty twenty-four, amending the codified ordinances by the removal of chapter one eighty-five, income tax of part one of the administrative code. First reading ordinance eight dash twenty twenty-four, approving current replacement pages to the Plain City codified ordinances. First reading, resolution eleven dash twenty twenty-four, establishing the cadet position within the Plain City Police Department.
Do we want to press the waiver of second reading? We can update the.
Motion to waive second reading, resolution eleven twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Just so you know, there's formatting change, but everything that's in that agreement that's proposed is in the, it's just a format change, the contract.
Mr. Terry, motion to waive the second reading, second by Mr. Sence, on the, on this, do you do?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Sence?
Yes.
Wait. Waiting the second reading is passes six to zero?
Motion to approve resolution eleven twenty twenty-four and establish an emergency.
Second.
All resolutions.
No, all resolutions are automatic.
No emergency. Everybody calm down.
So Mr. Terry, Mr. Terry moved, is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Udale?
Yes.
Mr. Sence?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Resolution eleven dash twenty twenty-four passes six to zero, and I will go ahead and motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
They will say aye, all opposed, same fine, meeting adjourned.